Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. It gives me great pleasure to speak for the Queen. Queen Elizabeth II's Diamond Jubilee Medal. And this evening I have the pleasure of presenting this to Margine Fischenberg. Margine was nominated for the Diamond Jubilee Medal by Joe Warndack of the Canadian Crime Victims Foundation in Toronto for her work done in establishing rights for victims of violent crime. The Canadian Crime Victims Foundation directly supports victims, provides educational interface with Canadian universities to implement courses that will better equip police, justice officials, and others in dealing with victims. Additionally, the foundation gives out scholarship funds for siblings and children of murder victims. It is with great honor, by command of Her Majesty's, see? To present the Diamond Jubilee Medal to Margine Fischenberg in commemoration of the 60th anniversary of Her Majesty's ascension to the throne and recognition of her contributions to Canada. So Margine, you have this great award and this really nifty medal. I don't know why I shouldn't try to pivot on you, but maybe you could just hold it like that for pictures.
When Joe phoned me and told me he was going to nominate me, I was really surprised. And I just, I don't really think this medal is all mine because I had so much support and from so many wonderful people, including my family, my daughter, and my grandsons, and all the courageous people and brave people who shared their own stories with me and allowed me to take their stories to the government so that I could try to make a better place for victims of crime.
Okay, we call this regular meeting to order. And could I have a motion to recess into the primary committee? Councilor Shaggin comes together. And we have the primary committee meeting agenda, adoption of the agenda, motion to adopt, Councilor Wires, Councilor Authority, all those are paid. First presentation of delegation is the manager of Technical Services, a presentation by Remi Alpito Associates. This has to do with community water wells. And welcome, Mr. Alpito. Mr. Alpito. You're not a partner in the firm yet.
Shall I sit here or what?
Yes, that would be good.
So there we go. So I have a PowerPoint presentation. This should take me about 10 minutes or a couple minutes more. So let me first thank you, your worship and council, for putting such a time and space for giving the presentation to you. I think it's a pretty positive presentation. Really, what we're dealing with here is we have had a look at the current, let's say, status of your groundwater wells. And we're looking at how to prioritize some actions that you might entertain in the future to maintain the sustainability of that system. We're also going to talk a little bit about groundwater protection planning, which is something that the Interior Health Authority has asked us to get started on in town. So I don't know which way to point here. It's not pointed so well.
It's a new piece of equipment.
Technology. We could probably just get somebody to tap on the keys. Like that's the situation. Okay, so basically, the first slide, I'd like to talk about what the issues are in Grand Forks with respect to groundwater. And when I say issues, these are the things that are being looked at. They're not necessarily major issues, but you know, there's some people that think that we have a really big nitrate problem in Grand Forks. And in the area of your wells, in fact, we don't think that you have a problem. And I have a lot of information and data to support that. Now keep going back and forth. Okay, we'd like to also talk about the delivery capacity. Some of your wells are very closely spaced to each other and it affects the ability for them to be pumped for long periods of time because they lower the water level in each of the wells. We'll also quickly talk about the aging of your wells. Some of them are pushing 50, 60 years old. And they're like any other asset that you have in the city. They need eventual replacement. We're not saying they need replacing now, but we're just trying to identify what the priorities are and which wells should be replaced and in what order. With regards to groundwater protection planning, of course, the Interior Health Authority is concerned about source water quality and the monitoring of that and the protection of that in your water supply. And the last one at the bottom is this business of bacteriological in your wells, like coliforms, et cetera. How vulnerable are your wells and do they require treatment? We'll talk a little bit about that as well. So moving through the next slide. These are the two things that we're working on. The project that we are pretty much finished is what we call an asset valuation and supply plan exercise. That ties it very nicely with your capital asset management plan that you're currently working on, except we're looking at the wells in particular. And the second issue that we're working on is groundwater search protection planning. And this is something that the Interior Health Authority has required as a condition of your operational permit. And we had some discussions today and we'll have some more discussions tomorrow. And we're trying to get that project kicked off as well. There we are. Okay, so it probably makes sense for us to have a quick peek at where your wells are. So I'm going to do them in chronological order. This is well number one that's no longer used. It hasn't been used since mid-1980s. Well number two is one of your older wells over here. Forgive me if I can't remember the name of all the streets, but well number two is here. The main drag through town is the highway. We have well two, well three, and well 3A, which are at the west end of the airport. And then we have well four and well five over here. Now, in 1999, the firm that I worked for drilled a test well looking for another location to develop groundwater supply for the city of here in the north. They also drilled one way down in behind this figure over here, down in this area, but it wasn't all that successful. This table here basically gives you a summary of a couple of the key characteristics of the wells. And I apologize, it doesn't appear to be large enough. I certainly can't read it from here, but yeah. I think you'll see the oldest well was drilled in 1956 and that should be well number two? Or does it say 65?
Well number one.
Okay, well number one. Well, it's not used anymore, so I included it in here for reference. But well number two is your oldest operating well.
65.
65, thank you. After that is well number 3A. And it's a funny thing that happened here between 3 and 3A, but 3A was drilled in 1969. Four was drilled in 77. Five was drilled in 88. And well number three was drilled in 2000. So from an age perspective, your most valuable asset is a number three because it's the newest one and likely needs, is going to last longer before it needs to replace it. So what we just went through, an asset valuation exercise, which is, we looked at the age of the, oops. We looked at the age of the well. We looked at, and this is a little bit technical and I don't want to go into it in much detail, but available drawdown is how much water you've got above the pump in the well so that when you pump it, you lower the level. The more you have, the better. Some of them have less, some of them have more. Efficiency is a huge thing for your wells here because they tend to decline in efficiency with time. You have to go on and rehabilitate them or maintain them. It's like changing the oil so that you make your car engine last longer. If you don't change the oil, it's not going to last so long. The other issue we looked at was vulnerability to water quality impacts, specifically nitrates. Are your wells vulnerable to nitrates? We're going to see later that they're not. Compliance with regulations. Since your wells were drilled there, there are new regulations which have been adopted by the provincial government that require a certain number of things to be done. Basically, the findings here are that a couple of your wells, I don't think you really should spend a lot of money on bringing them up to speed with those regulations. They're not really critical regulations, but they're a check box that Interior Health Authority would like to see checked out. And the bottom one here is this thing called GUDI. That's a very ugly acronym standing for groundwater under the direct influence of surface water. Your wells are not considered GUDI. We'll talk very briefly about it because it may influence our groundwater protection planning, but your wells are not GUDI and that's a good thing. This is, just to show you, is a big, ugly-looking spreadsheet that shows the summary of all of the analysis that we did. Just wanted to show you. It basically boils down to one piece of paper. Engineers like to solve problems on one piece of paper. And there's a whole pile of numbers there that reflect the value of each of the wells or each of your assets in terms of age, how efficient they are, how vulnerable they are. There's a whole pile of different things that we looked at and we ranked the wells as the highest value asset to the lowest value asset. We won't go through that table in much detail. Where we finish up with this is that, again, as I said, I think there's pretty limited utility in spending money on well number two, well number 3A, and well number four. Now, well number two predominantly because it's old, well number 3A and four because they're within 22 meters of another well. And so really what you should do is put aside money to drill a new well at some point in the future. You don't need to do it right now, but you need to do some planning. Again, that point of this exercise was to identify priorities thinking in the right directions of how you might plan for those options that are waiting there. Then we talked about this total delivery capacity. Now, that's because some of the wells are so close together, they interfere with each other. They lower each other's water levels and it affects their ability to provide water in the long run. In the long run, I'm saying if you have a very dry summer period for two or three months and you have to pump these wells 24 hours a day, you're going to have to slow down your production because the wells won't be able to maintain it. You can do it for short-term periods, like for example, for fire flows or for short-term demands, but you won't be able to do it for long term. Even as we speak, you've been operating the wells a little bit beyond their safe capacities. You can operate them on short-term the way you are, but not for long term. And I'd like to say we're currently in discussions with Urban Systems, who is doing a study for you for trying to determine if you should put generator sets on well three and, or sorry, well four and five so that you have a contingency for the supply extra water. And based on our findings, if the wells are being a little bit overpumped and for long periods, a little bit, you're a little bit short on how much water you need, we're trying to look at things like reconciling the amount of fire flows that you will meet and also to look at what they call demand-side management, which is trying to reduce the amount of water to people, people lots, and trying to look for more efficiencies within the system so that we can reduce the amount of money you have to spend in order to make that difference. And then the last thing we did is we actually found a location, should you choose to use it in the future, we'll call it well number six. And it's to the south of well three and 3A. I'll show you where that is instead. I'm going to skip this slide and that slide. This is kind of an interesting slide. And the only reason I put it in here is I wanted to show you that if you have a well here pumping and it lowers, this blue mesh would be the water cable in the ground. If you pump here and lower the water level in that area, if you pump that down far enough, the size of this area that's influenced is going to start to influence this next well over here and that one over there. So it kind of graphically illustrates the concept of mutual well interference, which is an issue you have with well three and 3A and then between well four and well five. Number two is okay. What causes problems with well efficiency? Well, most people really don't want to see what it looks like down in the water well. But this over here on the right is due to mineral implosion. If you can just appreciate, groundwater has a certain amount of soluble mineralization. And when you pump it through the screens, there's an electrical and a chemical, there's a whole pile of funky stuff that happens, and you get precipitation of mostly iron and manganese carbonate. And it blocks up the screen. And that's no different than, as we all get older, we have to go to the doctor and get a checkup when our blood pressure goes up a bit because we're trying to push the same amount of blood to a smaller blood vein. Whereas this, we're trying to pump the same amount of water through less area in the screen. Well doesn't like it and you get more drawdown than you would expect it to. Another example is here, this is biofouling. There are a certain type of aerobic and anaerobic bacteria that will reside at the bottom of the well. And if they left, if they're left unchecked for a long period of time, you can get plugging of the well screens. And in this case, you can't even see the well screen here. It's all plugged up. And also you can get this type of thing. This is the intake on the middle of the pump that's down in the bottom of the well. And it's all plugged up and you can't pump anything through that pump. So a little bit of cleaning there. But well screens typically require cleaning from time to time to recover the efficiency that's lost because of plumbing. And you've had, I think most of your wells have gone through a cleaning about every five years or so. So this is a slide that's in response for the nitrate levels. This is a contour plot of nitrate concentrations. And I just want to draw your attention to this little scale over here. Red is bad, blue is good. So this is your well 3A. This is your well two. This is your well four and five. Pretty well, but we have good data for some wells. A particular importance here is well number two, which is your workhorse. And you can see that nitrate levels were going down in the early 2000s. They went up a bit, but since then, they have been coming down, which is a good thing. Whereas up to the north over here, near the hospital, there's a well here that has been monitored for some time by the Ministry of Environment. And you can see levels went up, they came down, and they're increasing. So we suspect there's some type of activity over here that is influencing the nitrate levels in the wells. So the next thing you would want to do is to superimpose on that your land use. And so I draw particular attention, there's some agricultural activity here, there's agricultural activities here. This is park, this is commercial industrial. And you have, in a few places here, you have institutional practices. So let me look quickly back to that guy so you can see where our nitrate levels are. And then click back to that. And now here's the most important slide in all of this, is these red areas here are what we call capture zones. The capture zones are when you pump water from a well, there's an area of the aquifer that will pull the water towards the well. And the interesting thing about this is that well number two draws water from over towards the Kettle River. Now, we combine the capture zone for well three and 3A because they're so close to each other. But you can see this capture zone is moving over to also pulling water from the Kettle River. The capture zone for four and five over here is doing the same thing. They would extend down and eventually intercept the level, or the river. I might add that the time that these capture zones represent is a one-year time of travel, which means that when you're pumping water from this well, it's going to take one year for the water to move all the way from here over to that well. That's a good thing in relation to this thing we call GUDI, groundwater under the direct influence. Because groundwater under the direct influence is water that is pulled from surface water that may have bacteria or different types of microorganisms in it that are not healthy. And basically, what we're taking advantage here is our own in-house treatment system in the ground, which is filtering all of that out for us. So the fact that we have one year time of travel to the river and even more in the case of four, five, and 338 is a very good thing. Now, one thing that we did in addition to that, we tried to find a location somewhere in the city here where we thought you could put a well and not have to deal with nitrate issues and have good water quality and also not to interfere with your existing wells. And the location that would be optimum for a new well is down here. And so this what we would call a proposed well number six down here. So groundwater protection planning is something that we're just getting started on. This is a process that is being driven by Interior Health. And the main issues are they're looking for a contingency or emergency response plan in front of you folks. I know that you prepared a draft one a few years ago and I don't think it ever got adopted. I think it was just in discussion with Interior Health and it never went forward. They're also looking for monitoring and protection of your source. Now, they're going to focus on nitrates. You don't have a nitrate issue, as we've shown. The nitrate concentrations are away from your wells and your capture zones extend away from those areas. So that's a really good thing. What they're going to try and focus on is this whole business of GUDI. And we've just recently found out that there's a new initiative through Interior Health called Groundwater Quality Treatment Objectives. And basically, that is if you have any hint of biological or bacteriological issues, they're going to want to see you provide what they call dual-barrier treatment. But everything that we've done so far, you don't have those issues. So I'll get to a slide in a minute where we summarize where we're going with all of this. Again, groundwater under the direct influence. Very quickly, if you have a shallow well, it's a problem. If you're too close to a surface water body, that's a problem. If you have a history of bacteriological issues, that's a problem. If you have a history of elevated turbidity. None of your wells have these issues based on all the data that we have. And it's more than just your data. It's data that the ministry has been collecting in the area for many years, since the late 1980s. This groundwater quality treatment, it's still under development. Fortunately, I can say that I've sit on the review board on behalf of industry, working with the province to make sure that these regulations that are coming out are fair. You can't say one day that everything is okay and the next day say it's not and leave a lot of water suppliers in a dilemma. So we're trying to make sure that these regulations are staged, that they're fair, and so we can work easily with Interior Health to work. We're also trying to link groundwater quality to turbidity. And you do not have turbidity in your wells. For surface water, turbidity is a problem because it creates a problem for the chlorination process. But again, you don't have turbidity, so it's not a problem. So to summarize, I think there's a lot of good things that have come out of this study. At the end of the day, again, we've tried to prioritize what actions you need to consider in the long run for the sustainable management of your resource. And we just need to focus on the important things here, which is your water quality meets all the guidelines and there's no negative trends in nitrates that exist in the areas of your wells. That is a big thing around here because of all the attention that has been focused on nitrate impacts in the aquifer. I've said earlier, your quantity is potentially an issue in the long run. Right now, you're doing okay. You're overutilizing the wells a little bit. But you know, depending on how demand-side management initiatives go, if you can reduce some of your demand or if you have increased demands on your system through population or industry growth or whatever, in the long run, you're probably going to need to increase your capacity. We're saying through our asset evaluation program that we think you should limit investments in particular well number two, well number 3A, and well number four, and accumulate funds for replacement wells. Now, when I say don't put money into number 3A, I'm saying, okay, 3A will probably good for another five or 10 years. But when you go to replace 3A, you want to just put your new 3A or 3B, whatever you want to call it, a little bit further away from well number three to limit the amount that they interfere with each other. You can probably use a lot of the existing infrastructure that you have. So it's not as expensive a proposition as you think it might be. We've identified a location for a new well for you, to the southeast of three and 3A, should you wish to put that in in the future. We want to highlight that your wells are not GUDI. And we want to use that argument with the Interior Health Authority to make sure that you don't have to treat that source. Right now, you treat for residual within your distribution system. You don't want to treat at the source because it costs a lot of money. So that's the findings of the study. I'm not sure if we have any time for questions. I know we have a tight schedule and I don't want to take up too much here.
Thank you very much. And council question for Remi.
The one thing, I guess, here's a kettle of watershed studies that's
Speak up, microphone.
...being done, and I'm sure that that ties it into some of your studies here as providing, I guess, the source water for the rivers and other things.
Sure. Well, we've had an opportunity to review the Kettle River watershed management plan. We've had quite good discussion with Graham and his group. We've also spoken with some environmental, like, done the work. At the end of the day, the water levels in your wells are certainly a function of the levels in the river. But keep in mind that the depths of the wells are significantly lower than the depth of the river. And yes, it's true that when you pump your wells, you're pulling water from the aquifer and some of that water that's being pulled from the aquifer is being replenished by losses from the river. So if that river was to go down a significant amount, the amount of available drawdown, the submergence for your pumps would be lowered a bit. But the historical levels in the Kettle River do not suggest that you would ever have a problem with that. Nor, I might add, there's not a lot of I can't see that there would be so much more development occurring in the upper catchment of the Kettle River watershed such that it would significantly reduce the levels in the river. So yes, we are a little bit vulnerable to drought. You might lose five or 10% of the capacity if you wells just because you have less drawdown or submergence for the pumps. And we've identified which of the wells is vulnerable to that. And I can tell you, well number two is the most vulnerable to that. Well number two is your most efficient well at the same time. So it's a bit of a trade-off. So we've considered those things. We haven't done any really detailed calculations. But we have all the tools in place now to be able to predict what would happen if the level in the river dropped significantly, which will be
Thank you very much. Is there questions for Mr. Alpito?
There are none, thank you very much, sir.
My pleasure.
Good news for us. And a motion to accept Councilor Shaggin, Councilor Kendall, all those are paid. Okay. The next group to present to us is well-known to everyone, the Cascade Kettle River Heritage Trail Project. Sir.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, councilors. I stand before you tonight as a proud member of the Grand Forks Community Trail Society to present to council a vision that our society is pursuing for our region over the next few years. Our society is well-used to pursuing projects over the long term. We've gained a lot of expertise at that. And that we believe that the city has benefited tremendously from the vision that we put forward to the public. Tonight, I wish to share with you a new vision. That is of a paved trail from the 68th Street Bridge, the industrial street bridge, Roxall Bridge, all the way out to Nursery, and from Nursery to Gilton, and from Gilton to Cascade. Seventeen four kilometers altogether. This is a big project. It's a big vision. We believe that it's got tremendous benefits for the region and for trails within the region. So what's involved? Well, it's obviously a major upgrade to the existing transcontinental trail. The existing trail is there. It's rideable, walkable, but it's certainly not easily walkable for seniors or for toddlers, or for the handicap. It goes from 68 first to Cascade, to Gorse Trestle. We'd like to see that, think that it's going to become a safe alternative to Highway 3. You'll see the road bikers and many other pedestrian users on the highway because of the lower resistance of pavement because of the lower resistance of pavement to lift things, vehicles. We believe that it's accessible to all ages and abilities. And that is a city that is one of the struggles that you report to play on. And as Rick Hansen just went through, I was a metal bear for that. I know that it's a long time coming to bring that accessibility to the handicap. It's been within Canada now for 25 years. And still, it does pain me, frustrates me a little bit. When people are quite willing to deny that kind of accessibility to the wheelchair and to the handicap. We must make our environment accessible. And then, and we have to showcase the Kettle River. This is the very best of the boundary. Two provincial parks, tremendous access to the Kettle, to the public, to the river. And this project will provide access, and that's what trails do, is trails provide access to the environment for all trail users. And what we've done is we've just increased the number of trail users dramatically. Goes through two provincial parks and connects communities. And besides connecting communities, it'll engage people in the boundary landscape and in the history. So what does it look like now? Well, I took some pictures today. It's kind of cold out there today. That's not today. But I wanted to show you this. I want to make sure you all understand this with previous council. And through this one, I could carry on. There's a landslide with Roxall. And as part of the deal, Roxall built a parking lot. Now, let's see if I can get this little button to... Before, people who used it as part of the trail would park up here, right at the south edge of that bridge. Now, there's quite an this huge parking lot here. Looks to me like about 50 by 100. Roxall is probably going to build a kiosk here, at this end, and then the trail at road level. So you don't have anything to go out. And there's my day, my car, my truck there today. Roxall's done a lot of work there. They brought in a loader from Vernon to do it, to fulfill their obligation. You can see the trail leading from the parking lot, right there. Now, we're looking back at it, dividing a lot of dirt. Incidentally, what we're going to do in this area down here is they're just going to let it revert back to nature. That is, it will probably fill up with water seasonally, become a bit of a lagoon area. They are going to replant with black cottonwood. And indigenous shovs in this area. So it's sort of going to revert back to a natural area. Now, this is something that I think the city needs to be alerted to. I've tried to alert staff to it. This is the ramp. This has been, this ramp has been redone quite dramatically. It's got a much better angle to it now. But it does, because of that, and because of its new width, it just looks a little bit scary to me at the top here. And I'm thinking that part of this project would be to put some sort of barricade here crossing. Because of course, the bridge is right here. Walking along, so this is, I'm going to take you on a quick little journey now from pictures from different times of the year. Up the trail, it's become a single track. It was resurfaced. This trail is on city property. It is a city trail currently, the city does mow it. And it takes you to the back of Roxall, through the back of Roxall to the nursery trestle. And you can see the terrorism pipeline over that trestle. For a little bit further on, you know, well, one of the branding exercises in the past came up with this. The TransCanada Trail is our backyard. You see these signs throughout the boundary. And even though it's a little bit dated, these signs, I believe it really does show the community's pride in its trails. This is Boothman's Slough, where you're about to put in the park. TransCanada Trail Society and TransCanada Trail Foundation, rather, and the Province Forest Fund, the Trail Society, and all the other groups have put money in over the years into these trails. So there's access parking. There's signage and rock gardens. And you can see that part of the challenge has been to keep it mowed. Now, because of the vehicle, because it rarely gets vehicle use, the trail does have a tendency to grow in. These are what, if you disregard that old pine, you can see that this is one of the, this is one of the very accessible public beaches in the new Gilton Park. So the trail will bring everybody closer to those areas. And there we are standing on the trail, over Boothman's Slough area. Here we are, this is a little bit of a detail. This is the Cascade Gorge Trestle. Now, this trestle has actually been decked. I don't know if this is twice, anyways, twice, it's been decked twice, hand-railled twice. And this is a group of people. It was a rec department last year. It was a sponsored ride. There were lots of kids and groups milling around. And that's the Cascade Gorge Trestle. So we just took a quick look at the whole thing. So what's it going to cost? Well, these are big numbers. But as you know, there was a product, there was an intake for a community recreation grant right back there in January and February. And we put together a proposal sponsored by Area D of the Regional District for those funds, for a grant. Worked successful. But as part of that process, we were really able to do, start our homework. Figure out what exactly is it going to take. We're basing our numbers on the North Star Trail in Cranwell, Piverley. We're basing our numbers on the city's paid trails project. And in discussion with a contractor, what it would take. And so basically, it works out to about $100,000 a kilometer. How can we afford it? Well, the first stage is stage one. Sixty eighth and Nursery Trestle. Now, not all of this is city land, but about 900 meters of it is on city property, city trail. The work, the reason I put 2012 there is that the work has already started. You've seen the parking lot. That alone is going to be a major improvement for trail users. We're hoping that if the city sees fit to come in on this, to partner with us, that we will be able to leverage the city's money. That is, match it is what we're after, right? So between Roxall, TransCanada Trail Foundation, Ministry of Forests, Lands, Natural Resources Operations, the federal government, the D.C. Foundation, others, the hope is that the city doesn't have to pay for all of that. That we will leverage whatever funds the city can contribute. Stage two is a major one, from Nursery Trestle to Gilton Grasslands Provincial Park. There's the cost. You know, obviously now we're looking for the regional district to play a part. This is within Area D. B.C. Parks is also willing to play a part. Federal government, somebody suggested to me that we should be looking for community living funds through Ministry of Health. Then others, well, there will be other people who, the trails group will apply for grants for this project. Okay, it's not limited to just those that you see there. Finally, Gilton to Cascade, Area C, and again, perhaps the Canadian military, who just this past weekend were decking their fourth or fifth trestle on the Texas Point. They decked two of them on the TransCanada Trail. And maybe they would find a role for them to play too in this project. The project does have challenges. Okay, the first one, that's a major project. It drives the ugly man motorized traffic. Well, the earliest way you're trying to do is you put up some barriers. Here's a bullard. Mr. Longman is working on, this is basically, this is up at Fisherman Creek. A bullard is just a post in the ground. And we've gone through three or four different generations of these things. Here's a swing gate. This one's on Highway 395. And a rock garden. I think you can sort of see the expression, rock garden. So that, along the trail, it's from not so much this section, but the TransCanada Trail, basically from Fife up into Blueberry Falls, and as well as from Grand Forest towards Eagle, has got to be open for industrial use. So you have to be able to get industrial vehicles through it. You have to be able to get a maintenance vehicles as well as emergency vehicles. Self-closing gates for pedestrians. You should try to put up both types of gates. And over the years, the trails group has tried various things. This is a rock garden at the west side of Snit and Trestle. And trying to manage motorized traffic. Unfortunately, it's not every motorized user, that's the point. It's basically the behavior of a few that does threaten everybody. And so that really, yeah, there was local bylaws and enforcement. I know the city has a bylaw about motorized vehicles on their trails. The Regional District doesn't. But even more important, the provincial laws requiring licensing and registering of outdoor recreational vehicles. It's a long way to managing this problem. We hope to be, we are currently in conversation with the Grand Forests ATV Club and installing gates that would help manage motorized traffic. Here we are, working on a new gate system, lowering lock blocks into the ground up at Eagle Ridge, together with the ATV Club. And there's sort of what it looks like to this gate. And then a swing gate will go through here. Because of the positioning of the lock blocks, vehicles will not be able to go through, that is, regular sized vehicles will not be able to go through without permission. We have to make the project welcome equestrians. Not every trail user, people using the trail now, is going to be happy that we paved it. I want to make the point to the public that equestrians are always welcome on the TransCanada Trail. They are our core group at the beginning. And that a braided trail in this right of way is quite possible in much of it. Much of the right, much of this trail is within 100 foot right of way. The actual pavement would take up 10 feet, maybe 9 feet. We can do it. We will have, always have forest friendly gates. We might have the expansion of trail rides. We're trying to welcome equestrians, work with them, maybe we'll sponsor equestrian events. I use asphalt. While we did, the trails group did explore several other different surfaces that were possible. Some were, some required a resin to be poured on the ground. Others were both a mixture of reused asphalt with new asphalt, crush. Again, though, when we inquire to all the other paved trails users and as well as the large urban areas in our province, they use asphalt on their trails because it's the most durable and cost efficient. That's why we pave roads. After it cures, it is inert environment. It prevents grass growth and it's easy to maintain. And this is of course, is why the owner of the trail, and it's the Ministry of Lands, Natural Resource Operations, one of their big things is, that's why they want to see it paved. Because they want to see it more easily maintained and more sustainable. The more resistant surface, of course, allows for various uses of use. And a resurfaced trail will increase public attention and involvement with the environmental issues. Basically, we're going to take more people into parks. We're going to make more people environmentally aware. Hopefully, build the volunteerism for such environmental causes as the amphibian migration. I can think of that. Well, this trail, this concept has been very successful in other places. Cranwell, Piverley is in the second year of a 25 kilometer paved trail. Basically, two municipalities each paved one half of one third, or one sixth of the total budget. Province's paid a third, Better Perimeter paid a third. Something, another trail that many people have found very familiar with is Spokane and Colonel A Trail. So there's, there's a picture of the North Star Trail. Well, this is two bike lanes, side by side. And Favorment and Crush. Here's a little snap of Spokane, Colonel A Trail runs right beside the Spokane River. The Hiawatha Trail, well, it's not paved, as I've included it, because it's kind of an interesting one because they have, the only way you get to use it is if you buy a ticket. And they're, and they're busy all summer long. They're constantly being used. And basically, a ticket gets you the shuttle ride up there. You can rent a bike, that'd be extra. And it's abandoned rail grave. The Seawall Vancouver, of course. I've said, this is another contingent of trails, the Long Island A, Seawall in Vancouver. And trails in Ontario, including this one, in the Kids' River Water Reserve area. And there's more I could Who supports this project? Well, this is going back to earlier this year. The owner is a big supporter of the project. B.C. Parks, who the project built. They see it as a direct benefit to them. Area D, in the past, sponsored, they have a past application. The City of Grand Forest, the mayor wrote a letter. He's quoted on the back of your package. From the, you know, I, I hate, I, it's one of those things where the mayor wrote a letter, right? Counsel didn't pass the motion. Sorry, Mayor. But, you know, he came in on letterhead. It's up to you folks. It's up to you, counsel, to provide your support formally. City of Piverley, again, Nick from Kettle is quoted on the back here. The United Communities Regional Chamber of Commerce, they certainly support it. They see the advantage commercially to sustaining businesses. Trails B.C., TransCanada Trail Foundation, of course, they're at a point where they really would like to showboat the TransCanada Trail. And our community is a real natural portal for it. Trail cycling club, mountain bikers, the Grand Forests ATV Club recognize that the use importance of this paving area to be non-motorized. And they're willing to respect that. Many private citizens, I've got some names there, people who've written letters. People who both live in, live in Area C and Area D. We still get gestures of support. So the next step, what can we do next? Well, here's what we're doing today. Local elected officials are going to consult with constituents to make a decision on level of support. So we're putting it towards you, what are you, what are you to do? Meanwhile, the trails groups, that's us, we've got to go agree on usage. We've got to sit down and talk to the ATV Club, talk to the equestrians, talk to Favorment and Nordic Spears, and come to an agreement on what kind of trails can be shared and what can't be. We have to talk, go take a look at the survey adjacent landowners for needs and suggestions. And this is something we've been doing all along, of course. This is nothing new. We've been constantly working with adjacent landowners all three years as this trail has been in place. At the lobby senior governments, this is something that the, both the local government and the trails group is going to do. The trails group is going to apply for funding grants as these, as these become available. We'll go figure out all the permits and put all those stocks in a row. This is the work set out for the society. This is what the society is voluntary to do. We try to promote the idea of trails events. And we are going to allow for public discussion input. Because we know that something that this is this big, and with this much benefit, it's certainly going to bring discussion. We're asking people, like, see, I find this on Facebook. Join the Trail Society. Or contribute to trail building wherever they are. And it's always a pleasure to walk by part of the trail and see an adjoining neighborhood mowing a lawn or planting flowers and stewarding it a little bit. And if everybody who walks some of our trails, just pause for a minute to help contribute to trail building, pulling coriander, picking up garbage, whatever. That is always a big help. Anyhow, I have left in front of you our brochure. And the notes, which is bare bones of our presentation. And we are going to distribute this. We know that we're going to have to sell this to the distant places. Montreal, Victoria, Vancouver, Grand Forks. So we want to have something that looks presentable, that will carry the message, you know, pretty great. Anyhow, that's it for my presentation, Mayor. It's one hour and a half, and I'm quite willing to add any questions.
Counsel Crogg.
Sure, I guess, I'll ask you.
Is that your endgame?
After you ask me if I wanted to ask a question, I'm not happy. But I think go up before.
You can just twitch me.
Maybe it's, do you have a question?
Sure.
Why not?
I wanted to ask the well guy.
Braided trail. I'm sorry, what? Braided trail. Do you need to find braided?
A braided trail generally is where you have two trails of more going to the same place that are parallel. Sometimes they graze like this, you know, and cross back and forth. You would see, you see that on the Myra Canyon area, actually, where you have pedestrian over, you have old trestles which have been refurbished. But you also have a trail for all training vehicles that goes around it. Goes to the same place, but it runs parallel.
Bring you second, are you in the second round of the infrastructure?
We, Mayor, we decided.
Not qualified?
Well, we decided not to. That had a November 19 deadline, Mayor. We decided as a group, you know what? We really got a lot more public discussion to do. We're confident that sometime in the next six months, those, our grants are going to come out. And we will be putting together more and more, you know, more grants. The quick answer to your question is no, we didn't.
Hello, I got that. Counsel's head.
Now, you can explore any, you know, like, adopted trail, that sort of thing? Do you have that in place?
We do. And we, within our community, we certainly see that trail stewards, we don't have, one time we did have an adopt. We're going to try to get on those going. We see them on other longer trails, like certain sections are sponsored by different groups. But you know what? I find that the community has adopted their trails. And they do, they look after them very gratefully. When they can't, they ask for help, they call them. And the Trails Group does something, asks the city to go do something. And I find that trails are very gratefully stewarded. And basically, the existing trail is a testimony to the volunteerism in the boundary region, that it's lasted this long and has been put in shape for today.
Any questions? Mr. Longdon, excellent presentation. And I wish you the best moving forward with this. It's a big project that you're looking at.
You're welcome.
And a motion to accept your report? Counselor Rorschach and Counselor Doherty? All those in favor?
Okay. Just gonna wait for a second here. Counselor Shag is giving that, they just give them the ability to come back to me.
We have one viewer, I'm not sure who it is. You have one viewer.
We are on camera?
Oh, you're online.
Oh, so we have people to entertain.
Wow, at least.
I think it's customary to give the counsel just a moment here.
So what's your schedule?
An informal discussion.
Hey, Chris. Who is the, who owned the horse that was in the picture? A hundred bucks or property or something?
Ah, that horse was a dog.
Oh, really? I thought you saw her. I know. It's a lot bigger than it's actually.
We're, we're going to carry on. And the next presentation is from the Cootney Boundary Pet Dog Association. And I just want to clarify a bit of understanding first that the animal control contract is with the regional district. We're a partner in it as a service. And so, it, the bylaw that you're referring to at this point, our bylaw option, and the bylaw is under review. So, in fact, your timing is impeccable. We will be able to receive your presentation today and pass on your presentation to the regional district Animal Control Group. If that would be acceptable.
That would be more assured. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to counselors. My name is Sandy Keller. And I represent our Cootney Boundary Pet Dog Association. As a group of citizens interested in the well-being of pet dogs in the city of Grand Forks and the surrounding regional districts, we would like to propose several additions and amendments to the animal welfare and control bylaws. We would further like to reduce the zoning regulations, which would restrict small breeding programs and home-based dog boarding facilities. It is important to us that the people of Grand Forks and the surrounding areas provide evidence and role, have a secure basis. Here we are on our work. Pet and pet life assistance, vacation, accessible to ever. Housing businesses and training classes and facilities are essential as well to many dog owners. This area has also established an international reputation of respectable, responsible dog breeders producing pet puppies that are healthy, well-socialized, and an asset to the pet-loving community. There are successful and well-used facilities currently in existence. We propose that they be brought into accordance with any regulations and allowed to continue their work in the community. We would like the city and area to be known as a dog-friendly rather than a dog-restricted place in order to be a part of the worldwide lucrative pet industry. The regional district is looking into a bylaw that would restrict the number of dogs per household, which would put an end to small breed breeders and boarding facilities on which we depend. It would prevent pet owners from having a single litter of puppies, which is both unreasonable and ungovernable. We propose that the city and area look at its own dog regulations at this time so that a considered and effective approach could be implemented in the whole region. We do not think that it is the number of dogs in a household that constitutes a nuisance, but the care of the dogs. One dog at large is constantly barking, whether tethered, constitutes a nuisance, while a group of dogs being properly cared for in a small private facility does not. We would like the city and the regional district to effectively deal with nuisance dogs by: One, examining the current bylaws and animal control for the city. What's working and what isn't? Are there more effective regulations in other communities which could be implemented here? Two, applying and enforcing standards for breeders and boarding facilities that would ensure dogs are properly cared for and not be a nuisance to the community. We enable responsible breeders and boarding facilities to operate in an offering space while satisfying the standards adopted by the city and district. We have attached, attached proposed changes to the city and area's dog bylaws for your consideration. With our thanks to the Cootney Boundary Pet Dog Association. And if there are any questions?
Counsel? And, you know, I was looking at it, comparing it to the current bylaw. Some comparisons, but you put together a lot more research from other bylaws that people did to create the one they had presented to us?
That's correct.
And what other communities have you tapped?
There is a list on the back. Where, it's the final page. Our proposal information came from researching the bylaws of Colona, BC, Pitt Meadows, BC, Brooks, Alberta, Calgary, Alberta, Nova Scotia, and Grand State.
Okay, I didn't see that page. Thank you. Counsel, for your questions. So, you know, it looks like a timely presentation for us to look at our own internal one, but in fact, we share a single bylaw with the region. So it would apply to all regions and areas that vies into animal control. So that takes us to the outskirts of Greenwood to Christine Hallay, currently. Counsel Crogg.
Yeah, I'd be willing to make a motion to, which is option two, which is to receive the report or receive the presentation and then to unfold it to the regional district.
And a second for that one. Counsel Rorschach, discussion? Do you want to kick at the can first, though, in terms of the pre- and to the regional district? Do you want to look at how it fits our needs before it's passed on to them? That were, I would have some input that you wouldn't. So we could give it some time. Over the next month, if the council had input into it. In consideration, maybe, of some of the changes suggested. But it doesn't negate your motion. All right. All those in favor? Carry it. So we are going to pass that on to the regional district. My name is very much.
I have copies of the presentation I gave for each of you that I've passed into my hand.
You can certainly leave that at the end.
And thank you for your time.
All right, we have no unfinished business. We have a CAO's report. We propose closure of City Hall during the Christmas week. Had an opportunity to look at this, I think it suits. Our purpose is to focus on being a humane organization and building cause. Counsel Dr. Doherty, second. Counselor Smith, discussion?
This is, this is against the school, doctor.
Well, no, I think it's very well crafted and basically utilizes our energy for the best expense and doesn't people's here and there and zones around. And a motion for, all those in favor? Carry it. Okay. And we do allow gallery input at this point in time in the primary committee meeting before we go back to the regular. And in the regular meeting, we will also have input from the public at the end of the meeting. So anyone on the primary committee issues here this evening, please.
Mr. Longdon? Yes. Good evening, in worship, members of city council. I'm wearing my Trails hat as well as my Community Christmas Dinner hat tonight. And we just had our second meeting of the Community Christmas Dinner group this afternoon. And our planning is well underway for the Community Christmas Dinner, which will happen on Christmas Day at noon. We'll be renting the Gospel Chapel again and serving a fabulous meal. What I'm looking for from council is a representative that will bring greetings from the city to our dinner.
Thank you, Mr. Longdon, and I would be pleased to do that. I haven't checked my schedule or my family commitments, but I will ensure we have a representative there from council and maybe more than five.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and a motion to adjourn into the regular meeting. Okay, so we are in the regular meeting, counsel. I do business in the agenda which we are going to modify today. So the agenda item that we wish to remove is Yes, it is the item 10A, closure of industrial parkway as per Rockwell request. Well, we were looking at, there were a couple of items in terms of proposed changes and realignment. There has been some misunderstandings, minor, but important enough that we'd like to remove it from the agenda this evening and deal with it on another agenda. And I have a motion to accept the amended agenda, removing item 10A. Counsel Dr. Doherty, Counselor Smith, any discussion? All those in favor? Carry it. Okay, and back to the beginning of the meeting. We have two sets of minutes. The November 5 special meeting minutes, motion to adopt. Counsel Dr. Doherty, Counsel Crogg, all those in favor? Carry it. And November 5 regular meeting minutes, motion to adopt. Counsel Campbell, Counsel Crogg, all those in favor? No petitions or delegations. We are down to council reports, and I'll start with Counsel Rorschach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no report this week.
Counsel Dr. Doherty?
Yes, Your Worship. I attended on the 11th of November, Remembrance Day, at the City Hall here at the Legion. And I also attended at the Bonde Lodge in Harley Village for the meetings. And in my part of sports, all the teams are doing good. Our hockey team started to win, so.
Yes, I heard that.
Yep, so everything is looking good here. Well, that's all I got, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Counselor? Counsel Waters?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll start this evening with my report with the events on November 7 to MCN Services, winter stakeholders. At MCN, where there was an excellent open discussion following the presentation and an opportunity for city to rank into MCN's weather reporting for the upcoming season, which I will submit to our CAO for consideration. I also attended the Valley Restorative Justice Meeting on November 8. The group is currently involved in two active forms referred by the RCMP. I was unable to attend the Phoenix Foundation's 15th Annual Anniversary, 15th Anniversary event due to a prior commitment to the same meeting, but can report that both the Restorative Justice and Systems Albatro organizations did set up information tables in recognition of the funding support that they had received from the Phoenix Foundation in 2012. On November 11, together with many organizations from the community and led by the Royal Canadian Legion Cavalry Party, we contribute on Remembrance Day to those who gave their lives for our freedom. I want to also recognize the Silver Cross Mother this year was chosen by the Royal Canadian Legion to relay the wreath at the National War Memorial in Ottawa. And that mother was Roxanne Creed, who stands today as our country symbol of the mothers who have lost their children at war. who have lost their children at war. The Master Corps Colonel Darrell Jason Creed, as a reminder to everyone each year, served twice in Bosnia as a gathering of Royal Canadian children. 2007, he journeyed to Afghanistan as a photographer with the Air Force, giving the outside world a look at, through the lens of his camera, the war-torn parts of the world that we don't see. After only a month there, he perished as his helicopter crashed during a major offensive strike against the Taliban. So, in deepest regards to the family and as an honor to Mrs. Creed, the recognition that she received was very important. On November the 14th, I attended the stakeholder meeting for the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce, where continued five-year commitment was presented by Community Futures to pay the executive director's wages and cover support services needed to move the regional chamber initiative forward. Their current membership is 160 members with the vision of achieving 300 into the future. Community leaders in attendance gave their individual support and recommendations as well as recognizing the volunteer board and staff for persevering through a difficult process of bringing the regional business community together. The city of Grand Works has received a funding request from the regional chamber for consideration at our 2013 budget. On November the 14th, the Boundary Dog Sled Association group met, and the group is planning to participate in the 2013 Christina Lake Winter Fest, first week in February, proposing dog sled sprint races to engage youth with the concept of hitching a family pet to a sleigh. So, and they're also in the process of restructuring the 2014 Rail Trail 200 event for next year's, for the 2014 race. November the 15th saw the regular meeting of Citizens on Patrol. Former councillor and current environment committee participant Chris Mossen presented a partnership idea to the group to participate in nephrometer air voluntary by carrying the portable unit during their evening patrols. So the support was unanimous from Citizens on Patrol. First one for the inventory now should take place last Saturday evening, November 17. This is an excellent opportunity to utilize community volunteer time and resources. And just a few reminders, the Grand Works Environment Committee meets this Thursday, November 22nd at 11 o'clock at the Regional District Boardroom here in Grand Works, and it is open to the public. The Christina Lake Stewartship Society invites everyone to the Christina Lake Watershed Management Plan Annual Review, and this invitation is on Wednesday, December the 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Christina Lake Community Hall. Pre-registration is required by December the 1st, and you can contact Brenda LaCroque at 250-447-2504 or CLSS@shaw.ca. This is an excellent opportunity to submit our local lake to the east and their water conservation initiatives for their watershed. A reminder that the Santa Parade is Friday evening, December the 7th at 7:00 p.m., so don't forget to register at the dog store and start decorating. The Grand Works Public Library Regular Monthly Meeting is this Wednesday, November the 21st at 7:00 p.m. in the library meeting room, and it is also open to the public and encourage the public's attendance to see what is going on at your local library. And also, I just wanted to remind councillors that the AKDLG has forwarded the Columbia Treaty Review Workshop on November 28th in Castle Bar that local government can participate in, and that is a one-hour session that is open that just isn't what's going on.
Thank you, Councilor. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, worship. I also attended the, November 7th, attended the MCON yearly review, probably the affirmative. A lot of questions that most of us have driving on the rolls were answered there, and I thought it was nice that if there are any questions from the general public, they welcome them at the call, and they would prefer that the general public gets their answers directly from them versus any whoever's anything that stinks off there. November 11th, I attended the Legion ceremonies. I thought it very good and enjoyed that. I attended the meeting of the Boundary Museum Society. They have many exciting new projects going on there, and I commend them on their initiatives. It's nice to see what has been going on and it's going to go on in the future. Lastly, I attended the Downtown Merchants Business Association meeting. It's very encouraging to see the downtown business leaders coming together to form a united group, to have a united voices to the direction they'd like to see the downtown go and work in collaboration with the city to achieve those objectives. That's to my report.
Thank you. Counselor Crowe?
Some of mine has been covered. I will be attending a board meeting or a gallup board meeting tomorrow night, and they've set it up that as part of the agenda, and they've made accommodations for us to actually be on their agenda. So if there's any questions, concerns, or comments that council has, I can refer that. Those forward to that meeting. And I guess the only other thing that wasn't covered was, just after the weekend, I've at Christina Lake with the 39th Combat Engineering, that Chris Mossen was talking about, the 44th Engineer Squadron, their operation to replace the bridge. So he said recap, but they're replacing that whole thing. And it was pretty impressive, a whole bunch of younger soldiers all working in the weather and you know what the weather was like on the weekend, so it was pretty impressive to see them do their stuff, and that's what it...
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
On the 8th, I attended the Phoenix Birthday Celebration and 15th Anniversary, and well attended, and featured a keynote speech by Wendy Eddy, who is also known as Hope Lady, so she gave a very inspiring talk on the power of hope and how hope can achieve anything. On the 11th, along with me and the other councillors and yourself, I attended the Remembrance Day session at the Senate Tap. And then on the 13th, which Counselor Campbell, I was at the Business, the Merchants Association meeting. And again, to repeat, it's very encouraging to see these folks coming together with some fire to get themselves to work on helping themselves to revitalize downtown with the support of council and staff. And I'd like to make a motion actually to council to direct staff to organize an open house, to gather input from, you know, the downtown merchants and other community or other citizens on what the city is working on to assist the downtown core and to see what feedback they can give back to us.
So this would be an invitation to hear the City Hall to open house?
I would actually think probably Seniors Hall would be a better venue, that way you can accommodate more people, and the details really could be worked out.
And a second for that motion, Counselor Doherty. And the timing would be also left open to planning with the staff.
That's correct.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Close, carry. Counselor Smith, very good.
Oh, no, it's...
That's it? Thank you. I have a couple of items. I was at the Ag Society, meaning Agricultural Society, a very healthy, quiet group that's out there spinning off projects to other groups and just to report that they are alive and well and working on a variety of new things for next year. They also are the liaison with Community Gardens, with the Aventoir, all of that stuff. So although they don't get a lot of publicity, they're a pretty active group.
Awesome. I just wanted to ask you a question at that meeting. Did you think of anything about O.G.?
Yes, they did. They are attempting to pass resolutions and have those pass politically, as far as I know, to limit O.G. And the Remembrance Day, what I'll remember is the sound system worked, and we've been working with that sound system for a long time, so thank you very much. You ever set that up, that was great to be able to really hear people for a change. Excellent job.
It was unfortunate chairs weren't available. It's like people were waiting for some delegation to come in there and use them. I think, too, it's a good idea.
Yes.
Was it not a P.E. system or?
It was RCA system, but it was set up in a way that really worked well, so you could hear what people were saying, which is really nice. The chairs were cool. That's why people wanted to sit on them. December 4th is the first sit-down at the Regional District Table to discuss the specific budgets that we share with the Regional District, so face-to-face budget discussions on the 4th, and we will have staff members there. The question arose at the Recreation Committee meeting, and it was to do with the future expansion of the recreation center. Do we or don't we want to do that? The argument was made that now that Silver Castle is open and various other things are beginning to occur there, is it not time for us to really look at how we can serve that group and have them contribute to a more successful operation at the recreation center? No decision to be made, but we have put it on the table for discussion. Counselor Richigan is also a member of that committee. Do you have any further comments? Dynamic group. Thank you. Regional District reported, if I could roll this in as well, it usually gets melded together at this point, illegal dumping that came forward, which we have been asking for, and not good news. The Regional District doesn't really want to get into chasing down illegal dumping. And basically, the bottom line was they were suggesting that we have some kind of educational program, and that if we really want to see some of these illegal dumps cleaned up, that we're probably going to have to do it with volunteers. They don't see a role for themselves in courier ops. If you want to challenge that, we can, but that's what's coming down from the Regional Dear Committee meeting is tomorrow morning at 9:30 at the RDKB. For those with the constitutional ability to sit in on those meetings, you're welcome. We are attempting to expand the dear committee as you approved the letter I wrote requesting formal involvement by the Regional District, and we'll see if we do have any further involvement from the Regional District. One of the more exciting things is that we have open dialogue now with Yosu Yasinian Band, and in conjunction with the local METI Association banning, will also, I understand, be at the table tomorrow. And that's my report. Could I have a motion to adopt the reports of councillors and the regional report? Counselor Wires, Counselor Smith, all those in favor? And the next recommendation is 10B, since we have removed 10A, an application for a development permit. Development permit application by Diana Bearden regarding property located in 47-7225 Boundary Drive in Triangle Gardens. And what we have here is a recommendation to approve covered deck on that in Triangle Gardens. Can I have a motion to that? Counselor Doherty, Counselor Smith, any discussion? No problems. All those in favor? Carry it. The next item of business is a development permit by Bill Lane, property owner for Valley Heights Development Inc., regarding property at 733 Riverside Drive. And the staff report approves the development permit made by Valley Heights Development, your name, subject to compliance with city bylaws, ministry environment, and substantial compliance with plans as presented. Counselor Doherty, Counselor Wires, discussion? Counselor Crowe, again?
I just noticed that one of the plans that were provided to us, the only elevation that wasn't presented was the rear one. And when I go into town this afternoon, I'm a little concerned with the appearance of the back of the building. One huge yellow wall. And again, there is no detail on any, it shows every elevation and every front, except the back. And I was just wondering if we can maybe review that because I think it's not a very attractive picture.
So aesthetics are what you're concerned about. And could I ask for our CAO to get the report on it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the SCP requirements, we try not to have a consistent, I can't remember the language, but we try to move away from a wall being one consistent shape and color. We can speak to the developer as prior to the issues of the development permit to have that of that committee SCP regulations, and that was something that was supposed to overlook. I'm not sure if there's anything else in the report that we have that speaks to that, but we can definitely fix it.
There are some fixes to that situation that can be worked within this development permit.
There can be, yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yeah, just a comment. I drove by the place today and I was really impressed with the work that's taken place so far. It's gone from, you know, nice, or, I didn't say it, but to an actual really nice looking building. I don't think it's done, I think it's past it.
Okay. Further comment? Any further question? This is to approve the development permit. All those in favor? Oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, do we want to amend the resolution to be a breakup of that consistent feature of the back of the wall?
If you feel that's necessary, yes, we will. So this is to approve the amended development permit to include dealing with that single wall in the back.
Is that not the back wall? That's what I thought. That was the back wall?
But...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's like the front is blue on top?
Yeah, it's got the patio, so it's blue on top and this.
And the bottom there, three triple light doors out onto a concrete deck facing the water, facing the river.
Still isn't in fact a single product would be according to this, then, would be a finished product, would be the non-consistent formation of assault walls as we meet.
And that is such, do we need to amend this development permit?
I don't think so, that's going to be the finished product.
Okay. Further question? All those in favor? Close, carry. Thank you. And we are down to information items. Can I get a better way? Do you want to number it in?
Page?
Yeah, page number.
Page 4.
Thank you, Counselor Wires. All right. Motion. All right, the District, no, first of all, we have a motion to accept, as we disclosed of these items, Counselors Campbell, District Attorney, dear residents, survey sent to Counselor Smith. And the recommendation is that we forward this to the dear committee. Interesting that you should all get...
Thank you. Councillor Wires.
All right. Motion. All right, the district, no, first of all, we have a motion to accept, as we disclose of these items, councillor Campbell. District engineer, dear resident, survey sent to councillor Smith, and the recommendation is that we forward this to the dear committee. Interesting that you should all get an opportunity to read it, though, to see what gyrations other communities are going through are very similar to what we're dealing with. But in fact, we have now several copies of other people's surveys and strategic plans, so we're taking a look at everything that's out there in the dear committee area that we can use, so this will go back to the dear committee. Columbia Power, Public Power Open House, this is the proposed strategic plan for consultation from twelve to seventeen, two thousand twelve to seventeen. Members of council, if you wish to attend, please indicate. The Columbus Basin Alliance for Literacy, which is the council of Crowe's area, regarding community literacy process and advice to be available. Councillor Crowe can make note of the information provided. Letter of support, request for Christina Lake Chamber, and councillor Wires, councillor determined to authorize councillor Wires to submit her letter of support to the Christina Lake Chamber, application for funding from the entrepreneur, nonprofit program, and we did that, and it did get sent off.
Thank you.
Correspondence from the Ramada Mayor, the mayor to the Ramada Hotel, thanking him for accommodation for story and company, for the visioning that's coming on, and the November fifth task list in progress and completed. Further questions? All those in favor? We have no bylaws, no late items, and we're ready for questions from the public and media. Ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to bring out the issue.
You know who I am.
That sounds bad. Les Johnson.
Les Johnson. I was at the same B I A meeting that the councillors were at, and they want to get things happening, they want to put on events downtown. Events require venues, stage. What's happening with the wildlife?
Right now, the decision was taken by council to enact that, an option that we had, which we haven't acted legally, giving us the right to make determination on it.
Yes. Information to camera before.
Hold on anymore. Okay, so.
Thank you very much.
Wasn't aware of that.
I thought that portion of it was common.
So, essentially, the wildlife, oh, we need more, yes, as venues.
I can't say anymore, I'm going to talk tonight, I'm sorry, I'm just over my bounds.
Yeah, okay. So, last Thursday at Studio B, Patrick Stevenson had this little concert, ran for hours and hours, it was fun, it was well-attended, and at that concert, Bridget announced that there's only going to be one more performance at Studio B, and she's closing that door. So, that's two venues from the downtown area that I just got, at the same time that the business people were trying to get something happening. I'm just curious whether, might just bring you any of that information, so you know where, what's.
Councillor Smith, and we are in camera with the issues related to my work.
I don't know if you're aware, but musicians, they all started out just recently.
Yeah, yeah, Rick told you that.
Yeah, so, you know, certainly, they'll be looking at, you know, avenues and possibilities, so having our first executive meet me next week, or this week, sorry.
Okay, so, you know, the venues are disappearing, and we're looking for more stuff to put into that.
Well, you're getting in trouble, thanks. Further.
Good evening, mayor and councillors. I'd like to start by wishing you happy anniversary, or birthday, November nineteenth, twenty-eleven. You adapted to this position. I guess my question there is, has a council experienced being what you expected?
Council, he's asking, this lived up to your expectations? Let's ask some of the new councillors. Councillor Campbell.
It's been much more than I ever anticipated. Much more? Yes.
That's always.
It's been a lovely, that has been a very, very positive experience overall.
And the rest of the band, it's all been here before or so?
Yeah, but they were up for reelection.
Yes, they were, and the gang did it.
One reason for asking that question, I've been going through, or I went through recently, the statements you made in the Gazette prior to election.
Yeah.
And.
Did you want to remind us of some of those?
I won't be scoring, boy.
I've got them in writing, you're not here tonight, but I'll send them on.
In the newspaper?
No, it's too far from the anniversary. A second question. The website information for the city doesn't seem to be up to date. Is there some reason for that?
I.
Lack of staff, lack of somebody to do it?
I thought it was, but I would ask if anyone is aware that it's not.
Was there any particular part of it?
Specifically what's.
Not in particular, and seeing Chris Moslin here, there's still information, no information that I can find, and maybe I'm not using it properly, on committee. There's information on the Air Quality Committee.
Right.
Which no longer exists. It's good to have that.
Recyclable. But councillor Wires, are you aware of it being out of date?
Well, it's still under the Boundary Air Quality Committee link, and it hasn't been re-identified, that's the Grand Works Environment Committee. But I understood Wayne Copan, looking into, he's looking at a module at the top for environmental.
Okay.
That our garbage and things like that, and our community work, too.
Okay, so they're addressing it, and they are aware of it.
Okay. And final comment, I look forward to the open house, which is where the sponsor with the downtown merchants.
Okay, and it'll be well-publicized.
Been waiting a long time for.
Well, good, I'm glad the initiatives of council are getting it moved forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further from the floor? Your hands.
Great answer. Thank you, Mr. Wyrsham, and council and staff. The members of council who are part of the dear committee, I don't know whether this is an appropriate question to ask you or not, but what is their position on the COA idea?
Well, in fact, many of the dear committees provincially have been accused of stacking the deck with one side or the other of either supporters of a, or non-supporters of a COA. I think our dear committee is relatively balanced between those interests, so it's difficult for me to answer for the group, but I would say that we're certainly not one-sided in the way we're looking at the issue. How's that for a politician's answer?
I guess what I was trying to get at was, does council favor the COA, or representatives of council favor a COA, or, I mean, the reason I'm asking that is that I was excited to see that the article in the paper said that the native people and the, can't think of the proper name, but anyway, the Meti, yeah, that they were, the organization, they were quite excited or quite interested in the COA idea, and I thought, great, you know, we have a little bit of a chance of a solution there. And if you don't think I need a solution, come to my house tomorrow, and I'll take you around my back lawn and so on, and make sure you wear rubber boots, because you have to wash them after. We need something to happen. We don't, we don't need a committee to go on for years and years talking about what to do. We need a committee that makes a decision and moves forward with something. Otherwise, I could get rid of the committee.
Yes, and that is on the table for tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Smith, you wanted to.
Well, I was just going to suggest that you have to come to the committee meeting tomorrow and.
It's a tough committee, but don't burden them with this, please. You've put enough on this plate. Okay, that's it. Motion to adjourn. Don't make a huge, councillor, check.